Thank you again for coming out. This is the second of three work sessions on City Council bills 16-60669, 0679, and 0671. This is the Taxation Finance Economic Development Committee. I’m Carl Stokes, Chair of the Committee. I’m joined this evening by President Bernard C. Jack Young. To my left is Councilman Bill Henry, Vice Chair of the Committee. Thank you. Two chairs over, to my right is Councilman Edward Riesinger, who’s a committee member. Okay. And to my left is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark of the 14th District. And of course, sitting to the right of Council President Young is Council --
The 11th Council District.
And to my immediate right is Jennifer Coats, who is staff and a great staff to this particular committee, as all the other staff members have had to be. This is an unusual situation where every member of the staff, including those who are staffed to our committees, have been working with us over these last six weeks or so to make sure that this goes as smoothly as possible. I know that Angela Gibson from the Mayor’s Office is also here, as well as others from the administration with us this afternoon, including Steve Kraus from Finance, and as always, my great colleague, what’s it? Bill Cole, Bill Cole from --
The Controller’s Office.
Right. And the Controller’s Office is represented by Walter Horton also. So today, and by the way, let me announce right now that it is the intention of the Committee to convene once more for a work session, possible some voting also to take place. That would be Monday, the 29th, that’s next Monday, at 4:00 p.m. Place to be determined. We probably should go back to the War Memorial Building, but we --
We’ll put that a notice out, not later than Thursday morning, but it will be next Monday at 4:00 p.m. We won’t take much testimony on Monday. We will be looking at language, possible amendments. We’ve received some possible amendments already. We’ll be taking some more today, as well as the Council and the Committee will be
considering some of the language that we’ve heard over the last five meetings, four or five meetings, and we ourselves may be crafting language for amendments going forward. In addition, there is likely to be a community benefits agreement landing on our desk in the next week or two, and so also we would be looking at that and talking about it in a public forum. So given that, today, we want to discuss housing, affordable housing, profit sharing. We may return to last week’s conversation on fiscal and performance accountability. We’re likely to return to last week’s beginning conversation on local hiring, workforce development, et cetera, and there may be another piece or two that --
Before we leave this afternoon.
-- before we leave this afternoon and be prepared to do some really hard language wordsmithing on Monday. I think that’s where we are. I’m going to, before I begin any other opening comments, and begin with Housing Commissioner, Mr. Paul Graziano. I’m going to ask the President, Mr. President, are there any comments that you would like to open with? No? Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, we want to talk about affordable housing. Affordable housing, this is a big deal. My comments aside, it is very important to us that we have an inclusive community at Port Covington. There is no way that this Committee is going to consider not having an exclusive community. For a lot of -- and we’ll get into those reasons in just a second, but this is, at least for the chair, other than the jobs and the commitment to local hiring, the commitment to local hiring, making sure that this community does not and is not built with public money to do a segregated community. Now Baltimore, historically, is the leading city in America. We started with segregated housing, and we’re not going to do that, not on the taxpayers’ dime, not this one. And so that is more than major, and we’ll talk about that some more. Commissioner, we have an affordable housing law that nobody seems to like, whether it’s an advocate, whether it’s a developer, maybe not even the Commissioner. And so on this project, we’ve -- you have given a waiver. Now, in the past, we’ve done waivers, obviously, for whatever the reason may be, and we’ve also asked developers to, quote, “ignore the waiver.” In one particular case, we gave a TIF not too long ago, where we asked the developer if they would do affordable units on their dime. Now, I know there was a bit of a quid pro quo on that, but we did ask him, he did agree, and we moved forward, and hopefully we’ll see those, see the entire project done and that. So first, let us ask you, just what is going on that doesn’t, hasn’t given us what we thought we would get in terms of affordable units, and then in this case, why we decided or you decided that we would do? I think you have to press it and hold it, and then it should act. Hold on a second.
Okay. Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, members of the Committee, and members of the public. Thank you all for being here. Let me just try to lay out, there’s really two separate things going on here. One is a consideration of this, as with every other project, under the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, where there is a major public subsidy, and as everybody, I think, knows, the law compels that my department review each proposal that comes in to determine the applicability of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, and that was done. And the essence of the challenge, which is, I believe, why, well, I don’t only believe, I know why there has been proposed revisions to the ordinance that have been introduced in the Council, is that even though the project is subject to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, it meets the original test over 30 units and a major public subsidy, the fact is that the other piece of the ordinance compels that the city shall make the developer whole for the cost differential in those units that are made affordable in a range of incomes from below 30% to 100% of area median income for rental units. And the calculations that we’ve made have determined, in this case, that it’s over $180 million of public subsidy that would be provided to the developer to produce, even if there were 5,300 units, which was the initial number that was given to us. So obviously, if you went up to 7,000 or 10,000, I’ve heard as high as 14,000, that number just skyrockets. So I think we have to separate that issue, where we were compelled under the law to issue a waiver because we don’t have the funds. We have to separate that issue from the work of this Committee and of the Council, which is to consider three pieces of legislation, and of course, you have the opportunity and the responsibility, I think, to consider what the city’s quid pro quos would be for approving these three pieces of legislation. And within that discussion, the provision of affordable housing is certainly a legitimate and important issue. And in fact, and to kind of jumpstart the discussion, as I think everybody knows by now, there was an MOU that was executed between the developer and the city that calls for 10% of the units to be affordable at or below 80% of area median income, and more specifically that the developer should make application for low-income housing tax credits for 10% of the units, which would put the income target at 60% of area median income and below. And so there, I think, let’s leave the deficiencies of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance to another day, perhaps. There are many, there are many, and one is, the fundamental problem is the contradiction between the requirement to provide the units that are affordable and the requirement that the city make the developer fully whole. So that issue is behind us and ahead of us, I guess, as we consider a new legislation. But the immediate question today is how much affordable housing should be required on this site and/or accommodating the provision of affordable housing on other sites? My interest is in getting the housing on this site. So the MOU that I sign calls for 10% of the units to be provided on the site and affordable at 60% of area median income and below, and that we said they would be below by the provision of project-based vouchers, otherwise known as Section 8 vouchers tied to a certain number of units. So that’s, I think, where we are today. We’ve heard, I know, a lot of testimony about alternative scenarios. There are a number of ways that we can look at this, but I would say that what we have in place right now is an MOU, which is the floor, and that really is what we should be looking at, and in building upon that, not going back to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, which, for the reasons described, really is not applicable at this point.
Thank you. What are the numbers currently? What is 100% of AMI, 80/60? Do you have that?
Yeah, you got it right there handy? Yeah, I do. They got some one piece of paper I forgot to bring here.
Okay. Why don’t you read that for me?
All right. So for 2016, the area median income chart for Baltimore has a, for 100% of AMI, the, it would be 60,700 for a one-person household, 69,400 for a two-person household, 78,100 for a three-person household, 86,700 for a four-person household, 93,700 for a five-person household, 100,600 for a six-person household, 1,000, I’m sorry, 107,600 for a seven-person household, and it maxes out at 114,500 for an eight-person household. And those are all at 100% of area median income, so 60% would just simply be .6 times each one of those numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I see 60% for a one person is 36,420, two-person, 41,640, third person, 46,860, and a four-person family, $52,020.
Right.
All right? Which would be, the equivalent of four-person at 60% rent would be $1,301.
And as I indicated, it would be the intent of the city and the housing authority to provide vouchers on some of the units to get them down to affordable, really down to 0% of AMI.
Okay. That would be great. That would be great. Thank you. So let me flip it before I go to the advocates who have amendments, but before I do that, is any of my colleagues wish to make a comment or question of the Commissioner? All right. And before I go to advocates who will be presenting amendments this evening, let me go to the developer and sort of get your feedback on our request at this moment that we do have mandated affordable housing.
Mr. Chairman, John Laria for Sagamore. I think this is similar to the conversation that we had in the War Memorial Building. We don’t consider this to be a goal, we consider it to be a mandate. We also don’t consider it to be an 80% goal, this has been advertised, but rather a 60% goal, as the Commissioner has just described, and I want to explain why that is. The MOU obligates us to pursue low-income housing tax credits, which is really the principal source of financing housing in the United States at the 60% level. Perhaps the vouchers the Commissioner describes can get you down to 30%, but the low-income housing tax credit is the principal source. That’s unfortunate. It ought to be changed by lots of people, the federal level in particular, but that’s what it is. So we are obligated to pursue units at the 60% level. If for some reason we don’t get the low-income housing tax credits to facilitate that, we are obligated to provide units at the 80% level, which are a challenge in themselves, because ironically, in some respects, they’re harder to provide, because without the low-income housing tax credit, which doesn’t apply to 80% units, you have to find other ways to finance it. But nonetheless, that’s the obligation that we’ve undertaken. And if neither of those are feasible, we’re obligated to make payments in lieu at the amount of $30,000 per unit that we don’t build, scheduling up to $50,000, I forget the exact number, I have it in the notes. So we, our position, just to be clear from the beginning, is that we have made a significant commitment to affordable and inclusionary housing at Port Covington. It is a commitment that has never been made by any developer in a project in Baltimore that I know of. It is a commitment that is real. It starts at 60%. That is our intention. There are reasons that relate to the way the state is now allocating its low-income housing tax credits, which are competitive, which the Commissioner or I can explain in further detail, that actually make Port Covington a potentially very eligible area for low-income housing tax credits. Therefore, we are hopeful that we can get them, and we’ll be able to build projects that have 60% units at Port Covington.
Oh, I’m sorry. I’m sorry.
I lose my mic. It’s as serious a commitment as can be made. It does, it does have the, the, that I described, which is low-income housing tax credits for 60% units, if not, we try and build 80% units, and if we can’t build 80% units, we make a payment in lieu. It’s not an immaterial payment, one can debate whether it’s the perfect amount, we think it’s a significant amount. So I realize, and I know we’re going to hear from all sorts of people today, that they would like this commitment to be higher. We would like this commitment to be higher, and we are talking with the President’s Office in particular, and with others, about how we might be able to increase that commitment. And if we can, we will. But the Committee needs to understand respectfully that affordable housing units can’t be built for free, and the gap between market rate units and market rate rents that is created when you build affordable units, which cost more or less the same, not necessarily exactly the same, but substantial, substantially the same, but obviously realize much less rent, because that’s the whole point, the rent has to be lower. So that creates a significant gap, and the gap has to be filled in some way. You can either fill that gap with public subsidy, or public funds, or other sources, or you can push that burden onto the developer of the project. Councilman Henry, Chairman Henry and I have had this conversation several years. We were very involved in discussions around the original affordable housing, Inclusionary Housing Law, that the -- in 2006, I think, is the year. And that discussion about where the, where the burden belongs is a discussion that clearly is going to be had again in the context of the bill that Councilman Henry has reintroduced, which, as I understand, seeks to push that burden as a policy matter from the city where it now resides, to entirely to the development community. That’s going to be an interesting discussion, because there are a lot of folks who think that burden can’t be shifted, at least not to that full extent. So we have that, that’s the sort of baseline where we are, everybody knows what the law provides. We’ve been through the process, we received a waiver, which is the lawful duty of the Commissioner to provide, and nonetheless, we’ve provided what I’ve described, a 10%, at 60%, if not 60, then 80, and if not that, then a fee in lieu. I know that’s not everybody’s dream outcome, but you’re trying to deal, as I said to you, Mr. Chairman, in our prior discussion at the War Memorial, you said philosophical commitment, and I said, “There is an absolute philosophical commitment to do this, but there has to be an economic underpinning that works, and if we can find a way to make it work, we are all in on inclusionary and affordable housing at Port Covington, but it has to work economically.” And I don’t know exactly what proposals will be made today, or by your colleagues. You can’t simply put percentages of units and percentages of area median income in a requirement and just say, “Figure it out.” It’s math, and it needs the proper funding, the proper formulas, the proper pro formas to make the projects work. I’m sure people will have comments about that, but that’s our position, we think it’s a reasonable position, and we look forward to talking with you about it.
So, for a layperson, the term, the lay, for a layperson, your term “obligated,” what do you mean “obligated”? Explain to me exactly what you’re obligated to do. Obligated, legally bound. Is obligated legally bound, is that the same?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that’s worse. Okay. The microphone’s not working. He’s not working. Oh, okay.
Technicians are converging on your location at this time.
There you go.
Okay?
Yes.
So, once again, for the record, and we’ve had this conversation with Councilwoman Clark about what is an MOU, et cetera, we are legally obligated to the MOU, it’s a contract, we’re legally obligated, the city could enforce it. It’s binding. We are legally obligated to pursue low-income housing tax credits, we are legally obligated, if we are not able to get low-income housing tax credits, to build the units at 80%, if we can do so in a commercially reasonable way, and if not, we are absolutely, end of story, legally obligated to make payments in lieu. There are some provisions in the agreements that if we manage to build units on our own nickel, because it comes up with an approach, or a formula, or a technique to build low-income housing in some super-efficient way, I don’t know what that would be, but there’s a provision in there, it’s standard city language, that those would be credited against the units, but that’s really the same thing as saying the units would be provided. So I don’t know how to make any clearer that we view this as a serious legal obligation. Again, people may not like the obligation that has been negotiated, they may want it to be greater, and that’s their prerogative, subject to my serious concerns about the economics of a higher obligation, and it’s a respect on, on the feasibility, a fundamental feasibility of the project, not just sort of what effect is it going to have in a small way, but it could fundamentally alter the feasibility of the project. Other than that, what is in that MOU is binding, period.
Right. So I asked you a couple of weeks ago about philosophically whether you guys intended to be inclusionary as opposed to exclusionary, and I asked that because I’ve gotten calls from three or four or five developers who do this mostly, which is to build affordable housing. They’re happy with the profits they get, they ask and offer that they would sub-develop, or they would work with, in other words, they would do 100 units on-site, that were all affordable housing, for example, or they would work with you, blah, 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 as a co-partner to do some units. In other words, there are folk through the tax breaks, or tax credits, rather, state also, as well as federal, who do this on an ongoing basis and are happy with the profits they receive. Now, whether we’re talking about green, or whether we’re talking about environment, there are times when folks say social justice, and then there are sometimes folk on the other side, but the numbers have to work. It has to be good business, and there are a lot of folk, including myself, who think that social justice is good business. And I’m not saying that to be anywhere demagoguing, but we believe strongly that social justice is good business. And I didn’t do it for that reason, I am not doing it for that reason, but if we do that in this town, it is better for all of us, including the business community. It is better that folk are making a decent wage, and it’s better that folk are living, it is better that kids are going to great schools, because it enhances the business. So I’m pushing that, because it’s huge, not just inside of me, but it’s huge inside of my colleagues. I’m speaking for my colleagues, they don’t, they don’t give me a chance to do that very much, but I was speaking on behalf of my colleagues and saying, “This is a huge matter for us, that we cannot have a community that is segregated,” and I am not throwing out that as a race, but by socioeconomics, we would have a huge segregated community, paid for by public funds. It doesn’t work. It doesn’t work.
Mr., may I?
Sure.
I just, we agree. You know, I don’t think we’re disagreeing, I think we agree that we want to provide inclusionary housing at Port Covington, ideally at the 60% level, and if the Commissioner is offering vouchers that would allow it to be at the 30% level, so that very low-income residents could live there, that would be fine, too. We, I’m sure that people have come to you and said, “We could do housing there on-site.” They probably, I don’t know, but they probably are competent affordable housing, low-income housing developers, who have done tax credit transactions, and we look forward to working with those people. We, that’s what we want to do, and that is our first obligation under the MOU, to pursue low-income tax credit financings with those developers. There are so many capable public, sorry, private and nonprofit developers in Baltimore who do that work, as you well know. So if we could build all of these units at 60% using the low-income tax credit program, that is our intent, it is our obligation, that’s what we’re going to do. We’re just, but the world has to recognize, the MOU has to recognize, that those units can’t be built without a financial structure over which we do not have, you do not have, no one in this room has complete control. There’s a lot of work going on by advocates in this room, by people even in my own law firm, which has a substantial housing practice, to extend, to modify, to improve upon federal policy for low-income housing. And if we can do better, we will do better, and then that will be to Baltimore’s benefit. But if tomorrow, the United States Congress and the President of the United States decided that there was no, going to be no federal funding for low-income housing, God forbid, I don’t know what effect that would have, but you can bet that it would make it nearly impossible for anyone in Baltimore to do significant amounts of low-income housing. That’s the problem that we’re facing. So we are absolutely obligated to use the resources that we know are available, if there are more resources, we’ll use them, if there are no resources, then there has to be some recognition of that in the contract, the binding contract, which goes both ways between the city and the developer on this issue. So I just, just want to be clear about where we stand. Thank you.
And then let me remind us all that my colleague, Vice Chair Councilman Henry, did mention that in these total TIF funds, that some of those funds could be used for the write-down of this affordable housing, and that is the fact. So part of that is a determination with the developer in terms of how you use the funds.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I just sort of piggyback on just for one moment? I want the Committee and the public to remember that this MOU is groundbreaking in many ways. It is the first that I’m aware of, and I’m pretty sure this is true, that actually mandates that there be that there be the explicit pursuit of tax credits to produce units on site. The deals prior to this talked about payments into a fund. My point of saying that and repeating that is that it is our intent, certainly the Housing Department and the administration, it is our intent that the units be produced on the site. We really have no interest in going to that sort of third tier of write us a check. And that's why the deal is, the MOU is structured in the way it is. And I would just end it by saying, "I am confident, under the existing law," and again, it's always possible that Congress could change it, "but low-income housing tax credits have a strong base of support." There's actually a bill in the Senate right now to increase the amount of tax credits by 50%. So, I think that there's, it's not a huge risk that they be eliminated, but it's a possibility someday. My point is, this is a very attractive site and would score very, very well under any scenario in the state. And the city is committed to providing support, as we would typically do, the vouchers, but also beyond that. And so, that is what I want people to understand. We're not looking for cash. We're looking for hard units that are affordable on the site.
Great.
And we're confident that they can be built.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. I thank you for that hard point there. Let me also mention that when I, working with the President of the Council, asked that developer in Popleton to take on building, holding aside units for affordable units, he said yes before he had the conversation with you. In other words, I'm sharing that when the commissioner, it was public land, city-owned land, that the developer was buying from the city, he said yes to the President and I that he would do this before the conversation where the commissioner did lower the price of the land to him. So, I'm just saying, it wasn't exactly a quid pro quo that the developer made a conscious decision of goodwill, "I will do this," at least as I remember it. Commissioner, thank you. I'm going to, if you would stick around.
Yes.
I'm going to ask those who have come with amendment, possible amendments, and who are proponents and advocates for equal, fair, inclusionary housing, if you would now come forward. Mr. President, I'm going to need, not your chair, but your staff's chair, please, for a moment. The set. Thank you. Commissioner, would you pass your mic down, please?
Yes. There we go. Good evening. My name is Monisha Charial. I'm an attorney with the Public Justice.
Bring that mic over to you, please. You have to almost hold it.
Okay.
At least keep it close to your mouth.
All right. There we go. My name is Monisha Charial. I'm an attorney with the Public Justice Center, and I'm here to present amendments on affordable workforce housing on behalf of Port Three Build and Build Up Baltimore, three coalitions representing a wide range of housing, workforce, and faith groups throughout Baltimore. I do, with the committee's permission, would like to have Andrew Vincent testify first, before we get into our amendments, only because he has to go at 5:00 PM. He is an independent, coming from an independent perspective as an affordable housing developer. And then, after he wraps up, we're happy to present on our amendments.
Thank you. But again, keep the, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Andrew Vincent with Greater Baltimore AHC. We're an affordable housing developer. Thank you for having me here today to provide some comments. I studied the MOU extensively, and I respectfully disagree with some of the comments that were made. You know, a goal is not a legal mandate. And we have to remember that even with the best intentions today, there are going to be other forces at play as this is built out, and primarily, that's the financial markets. A financial market, those folks doing their job, is to maximize returns and minimize risk. If something is a goal and not a mandate, it's their job to maximize the income by not providing, you know, that goal. So, I think we just need to recognize that mandates and regulation are in place where the private markets are not, you know, motivated to provide certain benefits. With that, I want to say I'm not here today to endorse any specific proposal. I am very excited about Port Covington. I think this is going to be a fantastic development for the city. It's going to bring tremendous investment, tremendous jobs. And, you know, if the developer successfully executes it, you know, they will make a lot of money, which is, you know, that's fine. That's great. That's not a foregone conclusion. I mean, there's a lot of work to be done to get there. In fact, you know, their motto for Port Covington is, "We will build it together." If we're building this community together, I just want to take a minute to envision what this future, you know, community would look like. Because in 20 years from now, as this is built and everybody's living in there, what that looks like is being framed by the decisions and discussions we're having today. Without affordable housing mandates, the market, you know, is only going to build market-rate housing. I mean, that's financially what will be built. And that's not, again, from people acting maliciously. It's simply produced from, you know, everybody doing their jobs. But simply providing affordable housing on site, in my mind, is not enough. Because, again, without further regulation, what will be built is completely separate buildings of affordable buildings and market-rate buildings. And if we're truly building this together, when I envision Port Covington, which I think is going to be a world-class community for this city, I don't want to be building separate buildings that are segregating folks socio-economically. And you might hear the developer say, "Well, you know, that can't be done." Maybe, maybe they won't. But it can be done. If you look at DC, they're building a big project called The Wharf. That project is going to be integrated socio-economically within buildings. You can still use the same low-income housing tax credit program to do that. However, if you do not provide regulation or direction or intervention to do that, everybody doing their jobs is going to produce segregated buildings. It's easier. That's how it's easiest to do under the current financial programs. You build one building that's 100% affordable, and then you build, you know, eight, nine buildings, whatever it is, at a 100% market rate. And we have to ask ourselves today whether that's the vision that we want to see down the road for the next generation. So, saying that, I think it's very critical that in addition to the numbers of how many affordable units they are, at what income levels they are, that we also talk about the integration of the affordability within single buildings. And again, there are examples. This can be done. I personally am working on a deal in DC right now on the southwest waterfront that is an integrated building. It is 400 units, two-thirds of that are going to be, you know, market rate, pushing the absolute roof on rents, and a third are going to be affordable units. And we are using the low-income housing tax credit program to help make that work. So, this future vision of a Port Covington, of an inclusive Port Covington without walls, I contend is going to provide greater value and the world-class appeal than I know that the developer is looking to provide, that's going to stand the test of time and provide value far longer into the future than if we stop short and look at the old way of doing things and simply, you know, build it with segregated housing. I think that's going to be a huge mistake, and I think now is the time to sit down and make these decisions, because later on, again, the financial markets and players doing their jobs are not going to produce what that vision of a truly inclusive Port Covington is. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions related to the MOU, to the calculations. I've studied them extensively, and I'm happy to provide any input on that as well.
Thank you. Pastor, are you, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Are we, are we complete? Are we complete?
Yes.
Okay. Colleagues, or is there any questions or comments at this point? Is there any response necessarily from the developers? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. We have our amendments to propose.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. I said, "Are you finished?" And...
He asked if you had any questions.
No, we don't. Okay. Great. Good, good, good.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Monisha Charial. I'm...
Let me just mention, we're not taking testimony per se, as we've done in past times. If there is anyone who wishes to speak to the matter, certainly, I will ask you to come and speak to the matter. But we're not taking testimony, as we usually do, in hearings. Again, if you're interested in saying something, though, speaking to the matter, then we will be more than willing to listen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Stokes. So, as I said, I'm with the Public Justice Center, representing several coalitions here. We've submitted our written amendments on affordable workforce housing to Committee Chair Stokes, and we have copies to share with Sagamore. So, I won't take our time today to review line by line. What I do want to do is highlight five ways in which our amendment differs from, and we believe is stronger than the current MOU between Sagamore and the city. First, the set aside for affordable housing is a requirement.
Let me interrupt you a minute. Do you have this for the committee to look at right now?
Sure. Yep.
Ms. Coats will take that. And also make sure the developer has copies. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is that me?
We may not have enough for everyone today. Certainly, we can follow up and share more. Okay. Great. Okay.
Thank you.
So, we want to highlight five ways in which we think this is stronger than the MOU. First, the set aside for affordable housing is a requirement, not a goal. As we heard, we know that even if people here have the best of intentions, if there is no binding requirement that Sagamore and its successors, whose intentions we do not know, build affordable housing on site, then they will not do it. And that is particularly true, because the MOU as structured essentially allows for a buyout of $3,000 to $5,000 per unit, such that there's actually a financial incentive to pursue that buyout and not, and a disincentive to creating affordable housing on site. So, yes, there is a, there is a component of the MOU that's binding. You've got to pay for a buyout if you don't do 10% set aside at 80% AMI. But that buyout is pretty inexpensive and does not create affordable housing. So, our amendment asks for a 25% set aside for affordable housing on site without a buyout option, certainly not one that creates these financial disincentives to construction of the housing. Second, the set aside creates housing opportunities for households at a range of income levels. So, of that 25% set aside, 30% of the units will be for households at 30% of AMI, which is around the poverty level. Another 25% will be for households at 60% of AMI, and the remainder will be for households at 60% to 80% of AMI. So, we are talking, again, about a truly inclusive community that reflects Baltimore, folks from the lowest income levels to, you know, working poor and right on up. Third, the set aside ensures sufficient opportunities for family-friendly housing. We know that in Baltimore, we've got a significant need for housing for families with children. So, we are proposing that half of the affordable units be three bedrooms. Fourth, it does call for the integration of affordable units among the market-rate units throughout the development, so that we don't have, you know, nine market-rate buildings and all the affordable units concentrated in one place. And finally, the set aside includes a critical financing mechanism, which was not present in the city's inclusionary housing analysis. So, in that analysis, the city did not take into account the potential source of federally-backed funding, housing choice vouchers. We heard a little bit about this today, but again, they don't appear in the MOU. Our proposal requires that the city housing authority project-base a sufficient number of federally-funded housing choice vouchers at Port Covington to subsidize all units at the 30% AMI level, to the FMR or the fair market rent for the region. This means that developers only need to absorb the difference between the rent it was planning to charge, its market-rate rent, and what HUD has already determined is the fair market rent for this region. In addition, a significant chunk of the affordable units at the next highest level, so the 60% AMI level, are likely to go to families with tenant-based housing choice vouchers, which provides the same level of subsidy, a subsidy up to fair market rent. This is particularly likely to be the case, because in our amendment, we are also asking that affordable units be affirmatively marketed to households least likely to apply for the housing, including in particular those with vouchers. So, we ran these numbers, and when you take into account project-based subsidy for the 30% AMI units and a tenant-based voucher subsidy for a conservative projection of half of the 60% AMI units, you cut down the per-unit cost by over a quarter. And that's before you even take into account other sources of funding that Sagamore is planning to pursue, like the low-income housing tax credit. So, we are delighted to hear that Sagamore and the city want to do more to make sure this is an inclusive community, and we're glad to sit down and work through these amendments together.
Thank you, Pastor.
I just want to add a couple of things. And first, I want to ask Commissioner Graziano, since he's sitting here. So, are you saying that you're committed to providing the housing vouchers that would help reach that 30% AMI level?
Pastor, before you do, first, I need to identify yourself, Pastor.
Sorry. Andrew Foster Connors, clergy co-chair of Build.
Okay. And then, Pastor, in this setting, it is generally observed that the conversation is with the council.
Okay.
Not necessarily, not that...
Understood. Understood.
If the commissioner wants to speak to it, he can, but generally, it is not protocol.
Understood. So, let me, well, it's not a cross-examination. I'm wondering, our plan includes a commitment by the housing authority to commit housing vouchers as a piece of the plan. And so, I'd like to know, would the city council be able to call on the housing commissioner to set aside some of those housing vouchers for this plan?
Commissioner, I would appreciate, the council committee would appreciate if you did speak to that.
Yes. Let me, let me be clear. It is in the housing authority's interest to see the construction of new, high-quality, affordable units. We have an inventory that's very old. We need to replace that and to continue to expand the supply. So, the housing authority is very much committed to and interested in doing this. I would point out the fact that the housing authority is a separate legal entity and is not a party to this agreement. So, we can't, we can't make, the city council cannot incorporate into your legislation a commitment of the housing authority resources. I certainly would be happy to write a letter that says the housing authority and explain why it's in our interest to see the production of hard units. But it's, but if you're considering your legislation, I'm sure the city solicitor's office would point out that the city council cannot bind the housing authority... office would point out that the city council cannot bind the housing authority nor the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which must approve the project basing, as the term is called, of vouchers. But I have, from my many years of experience, one, we have a total interest in seeing it happen from the housing authority perspective, and two, the sense that both the state of Maryland, Department of Housing and Community Development, and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development would be interested in supporting this.
Thank you. I had a question for the, for the commissioner. So one of the things that we, we commonly deal with here is, and in this regard, sometimes there's difficulty in educating the public to the fact that the city council can't really commit itself to anything that a future council can't undo. There's, there's no law that we can pass that a future council couldn't undo it if they wanted to. My question for you is, as the executive director of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, can you legally commit the housing authority for Baltimore City to a certain number of vouchers for a project in the future going, you know, going forward? Can you, can you do that? Not, not can we make you, but do you have the power to do that?
We, in the, in the short run, we can through something that agreed, called an agreement to enter into a housing assistance payments contract, or an AHA, it's called, which is the predecessor to a housing assistance payments contract. So it's between the housing authority and the developer where we agree to, they agree to provide units and we agree to provide the subsidy. That's not something you would traditionally do with a 20-year time horizon, but there are certainly early-on provisions that could be made, but it's, it's not something that we can say absolutely, we are committing now and forever. But I can say that the housing authority is very, very interested and desperately needs new housing stock, new housing opportunities. So I can't imagine that there'd be a scenario where the housing authority would not be interested in that. But, but we cannot, as you suggest, commit 10, 20 years down the road.
So, so at the, at the, at the risk of getting into the weeds of a potential negotiation, I can understand why there might be hesitancy to commit to a certain number. But conceptually, is, is it something that the housing authority would be willing to negotiate with this developer?
Yes.
If that was one of the points that we're trying to resolve here?
Yes. I would say, and I would want to check with my general counsel on the parameters, but I would be very happy and eager to negotiate a, a separate deal, let's say, between the housing authority and the developer that lays out terms and conditions that would get us to where we're trying to get to. It wouldn't necessarily be specifically binding in terms of X number of units over whatever period, but, but I, I would want to push it as much as I could, yes, in that agreement. And I would be prepared for us to do that. But keeping in mind, it's a separate negotiation and a separate contract, but I could imagine that we could craft something that would be, would have some teeth.
So this is where I'm going to bounce away from you to Ms. Ruli of the Law Department. Just, you don't have to get up unless the answer isn't yes. If the answer isn't yes, you can come and explain it, but if the answer is yes, you can just nod.
There are people listening in the other room.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll tell the people in the other room if she says yes. All right. So the, the question I'm looking for is, in reference to the work session we had last week, where it would be, would it be okay for us to reference such an agreement in our legislation? We couldn't write into the legislation that this had to happen, but if the housing authority and Sagamore were to come to a separate agreement, could we reference that in our legislation? Yes. She nodded yes. For all of you watching, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there something you wanted to close with?
Yes.
Sure, Pastor, go ahead.
Just a few other things. You know, our position, Mr. Chairman, is that the city really should not be in the business of subsidizing affluent enclaves, especially not one year after the unrest. And that's our baseline, that's our baseline scent. And I just want to add, we actually agree with Sagamore that we need to find ways to pay for it, that the math has to add up. But, you know, what we see is that Sagamore comes in with tons of creativity on their design side. You see, you know, kayak landings and boat slips that are paid with, paid for by TIF subsidies. We want to see the same kind of creativity that goes into affordable housing plans. So, for example, our plan would say, let's look at some of the TIF revenues, shift them away from the $140 million right now that are put in there for parks and amenities that independent analysis has said would be better paid for by the developer and not with public funds. Let's use some of those TIF subsidies to subsidize affordable housing. Let's use the profit sharing agreement. I know you're going to get to profit sharing at some point. Also, a portion of that to subsidize affordable housing. And let's bring the same kind of creativity to that as we've seen from Sagamore in their PR campaign. And let's get some real business done in Baltimore that benefits everyone, not just the developer. So that's, that's one point. I think the, the only other, the other, only other point I wanted to make is that, you know, as I hear Sagamore talk about this MOU and that they are legally obligated to pursue, basically, unless I'm not hearing correctly, they're saying they're legally obligated to pursue this one idea, low-income tax credits. If they're not able to achieve that, then they go to another idea for the 80%, and then that's it. That is the weakest language, I think, that I've heard yet about this deal. We need much stronger language that's about real mandates that the developer has to meet as opposed to, I tried hard, I'm sorry I wasn't able to do it. We know that Sagamore can do better than that. We know the city council can do better than that. We have champions of affordable housing on this council. We're looking to you to provide those mechanisms to meet some of those objectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any reflection? Not that you have to, I'm just asking. No? We're good? You're fine if you would like to.
We're not your enemy, Reverend. We're trying to be on the same side here. So it's, this sort of, you know, snarkiness is not helpful to the discussion.
We're, we'll meet any day and negotiate a deal. We've talked to Mr. Weller directly. I went to him directly at the last meeting to follow up on what Council President Young had called for, which was Build and Labor and Sagamore to sit at a table and negotiate. So I don't feel that I'm being snarky if I call on a developer who refuses to come out from behind attorneys and PR campaigns to sit at a table with the public and do the public's business in public. If you want to set a date and a time for a negotiation, Build will be there for a negotiation.
I, I think we've been past that, Reverend. And, Mr. Chairman, frankly, I'm not going to sit here and I'm not going to ask Sagamore to sit here if there's booing and cheering in the chambers respectfully.
I can't control that. I've asked them not to do that. Let me, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. You know, we've been great. Please. So, I got you. Let's do it. Let me just mention that, Mr. Laria, with all due respect, you opened this door here. I didn't want a back and forth. You did.
I, I apologize.
It's okay.
I apologize, but you know, now, in the words of a lawyer, much better than I, I'm not a potted plant. Some people will remember that.
Go ahead. I'm good. I, here's what I, here's what I, here's what I agree with. I agree.
Let me.
Here's what I agree. Let me just say this.
I'm going to, I'm going to move on to the other point.
You go first.
At some point, we have to get, I mean, this is going to keep coming up, so we should get to this point about what's the TIF being used for. And it's not been said, well, it was said actually, I think, by some of the SB6 advocates at, or members at one of the earlier meetings, perhaps at the Planning Commission. We're not building these amenities for the benefit of this development project. We're building the amenities, public amenities, with public funds for the benefit of the citizens of Baltimore. And I'm really, it's unfair, it is unfair to the residents of South Baltimore, it's unfair to the residents of Cherry Hill, and if they were here, I think they would tell you that it's, you know. Great.
Okay, hold it, go ahead.
Excuse me. It's very easy to derisively talk about kayaks as if it's trivia, but I think the rec and parks people who are here will tell you, the SB6 people who are here will tell you, that those rec and parks programs for the youth of Baltimore, regardless of their color or their demographic, are valuable, world-class programs that should be available to those children regardless of their income or where they live. So kayaks, it's easy to start throwing darts at kayaks as if it's a frivolous thing, but I.
Okay. Let me just say a couple of those. Hold on. Let me say a couple of things.
We are not providing, Mr. Chairman.
Just a second.
Of course.
Just a second. I am, I am, I, I will ask, I will ask folk who are disrespectful and believe heckling is better than, I will ask that you be removed, even if you are my friends. I will ask that you be removed from this room.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those amenities, those world-class, first-ranked city amenities, those waterfront amenities, those environmental amenities are deserved by everybody in this city. Everybody. Everybody who has public access to all of this shoreline at Port Covington when it's complete, everybody in South Baltimore, and you've heard from SB6 how they've been ignored for years, the kids in Cherry Hill. This is a public amenity that we're providing, not for our own pleasure or entertainment. We're providing world-class public amenities to support a world-class project. Everybody could look through that list and pick something that they don't like or that they think is something they wouldn't do. At a prior meeting, someone said, I'm never going to rent a kayak. Fine, don't rent the kayak. But don't tell us that there are not children, adults, and others in this city who are not going to take advantage of, of the world-class recreational and educational and environmental opportunities that we're seeking to provide at Port Covington. That is.
He is my friend, and he knew that I would be drawing him out.
Mr. Chairman, I'm fairly sure that African-Americans kayak too.
Okay. Now, listen to me very carefully. Reverend, 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 I need, uh, where is, yeah, they should always be here.
We need Tommy back.
Yeah.
Is Tommy still here?
But. Reverend, I, I, Reverend.
Chair, this is way out of control. He is not helping.
Okay, okay, let's move, let's move, let's move, let's move. Mr. Brown, I'm going to ask you to make sure that my friend, the Reverend, does not come back. All right? If you have to go downstairs to come upstairs, do that.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
If you might. Let me say that, in a more moderate tone, I couldn't disagree with you more, Mr. Laria. I couldn't disagree with you more. You're asking for $140 to do campus enhancements. You can call it public, I hear you. We just gave a guy $60 million to do public parks on a peninsula, you know where, Harbor Point. And I'm telling you that the folk and the kids uptown will never, will never set foot on that property. Now, let me, let me mention, this is, again, please, please, I disagree with my friend, John Laria, as he disagrees with me, respectfully. The $140 million is three times the budget annually of the Baltimore City Department of Recreation and Parks. Three times that budget. And so who makes the decision on where recreation facilities newly are built and parks are laid out? Well, let me not keep going down that path. We sort of opened it, you took the bait, I'm surprised, and, and spun it back, and I got drawn into it. God bless me. Can I, you have one last thing and then let us move?
Of course.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And I appreciate your measure.
Then Councilwoman Clark.
And I appreciate your measured tone and respectfully, certainly, if we disagree, we disagree. The developer is dedicating to the city 34, 40, I can't remember, 35 acres of, 40 acres of park, sorry, 30, 40 acres of land that it bought for the purpose of public parks, which we seek then to have improved with public funds to be used as a public amenity. That's a public-private partnership to provide recreational amenities to the entire city of Baltimore. We're buying it, we're donating it, there are public improvements being made upon it with tax increment. The money is not being diverted from any other purpose. The money doesn't exist, as you know, today because it's coming from only future tax increment. So remember that the, the land is being devoted to park use. Moreover, we have agreed to maintain that in perpetuity so that the Recreation and Parks budget is not further impaired because of its limitations. I will just tell you that it is our judgment that if world-class parks are not built at this project, the project will not succeed either for the project or for the citizens. As for the assertion that people will not go to Port Covington, I think they said that about Millennium Park in Chicago, they said it about Bryant Park in New York, they said it about all sorts of other parks. I can't argue with you. You certainly know your constituency better than I do, Mr. Chairman, but I think unfortunately, that is a low expectation that we should collectively seek to exceed, not to defer to. Thank you.
I hear you. So, turning away, turning away from this Port Covington and from you, let me be clear. Harbor Place, black kids are harassed at Harbor Point by the police and by other officials of the city because they're not supposed to be at Harbor Point. They are kicked the hell out of Harbor Point. And, hell, let's go over to Harbor East. Well, I could go on, but the point is clear, is very clear, that we're a divided city intentionally. Mary Pat.
It's all right, whatever. I, I don't want to talk about the park. I don't want to talk about how hard it is to raise the money to help kids find a place that they can play with their football league, their baseball league, and everything else. A lot of us spend a lot of our time working on that, and the Parks Department is great, but that's not what we're really here to talk about. What was said, and I'm a council member, but I'm not a member of this committee, but I'm here all the time because this is hugely important to me. What was said was, tonight we're talking about housing, we're talking about proposed If the developer is not negotiating with the people bringing in the amendments, with all the different people who have coalesced together to make it easier and more focused for us here, if that's not happening, then... for us here, if that's not happening, then everyone's time has been wasted, and now ours has been too, and that's unacceptable behavior, and that's unacceptable for us, we should close up shop and send it home. Now, I mean that sincerely. So, what was said was, come out and negotiate. Now, me, I, I think that the developer and the advocates and stakeholders should now negotiate. And if somehow that can't happen, then come and do it in front of us, but get it done, or this bill will never get done in this chamber. I, I mean, I didn't count votes here and say that, I'm just saying, we cannot walk forth from this hall without having achieved for the people of Baltimore the kinds of affordable housing, workforce development, career pathways, profit sharing, and school security, I mean, protection against loss. We cannot walk forth from here with this legislation without those components to some level. Now, I'm not saying I counted votes and I, that's exactly what everybody said, I'm saying that's what our people expect of us, the ones who support this to the hilt and the ones that have their doubts, they do expect that. And we've got to get past all the rhetoric, both, and get to, what's the amendment, and we got to say, has it been negotiated, and then we got to, if, we got to vote on it. And if we find that somehow it's not legal, 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 legal for us to have it in legislation, then we have to insist on a legally binding contract on these things. We can't walk out with this much money, of the people's money at stake, without something beyond the four corners of this project. That's all. It's only right. And that's what people everywhere I go say. How's it going? Well, you know, going pretty well, I guess. Well, make sure they do right, make sure something, make sure we get something for the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. So, we want to move forward, I, I had asked, and I'm going to do this toward the end of our session today, I'd ask that folk who were sitting at that table and that table would get together, I would be in the room, I wouldn't say a word, I would be an observer, and I would listen, and I want to, shut up, I mean, excuse me, excuse me, I'm going to have to throw myself out of the room.
So, give us a date, we'll, we'll do it, Mr. Chairman, give us a date, we're ready.
I, I got it, and I had asked that, that negotiations take place, and I know that one
Mr. Chairman.
One group of folk got together, I don't know how that turned out, I'm not going to do it at this point, I do want to ask how that went. I see Lyona is in the room, and I also know, I'm not going to do it at this moment, a little bit, and I had also expected that, that Build Up Build, Port Three, would also be meeting, is that for, for, for someone? And I do want to hear if there has been, for lack of a better word, an honest attempt to negotiate, not meeting because the political folks that, you know, get-together guys, but if there has honestly been that, but let me hold that, let's do that a little bit later, but I do, would like to hear, it was a request from the chair that take place, and I'm still available to do that preferably before we get back together at 4:00 on Monday, although I guess I do know of a meeting that is to take place on Monday afternoon, or the following, yes, this Monday, right, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I
Yes, John, Mr. Larria.
As you know, I'm just the lawyer here, and the client advises me that they're willing to meet at 9:00 tomorrow morning to discuss these issues. I would point out
I didn't hear that.
The client is willing to, Sagamore will meet at 9:00 tomorrow morning to discuss these issues. I would point out that we've had several meetings with Build and the Coalition in the past, there's been no specific proposal, we're now here at the second working session, and it's been slid across the table. But we will, but we will meet at 9:00 tomorrow morning, we will listen with an open mind, and we will negotiate in good faith.
Mr. Chairman, I have to respond to that.
Yes.
We have met twice with Sagamore, we made it clear at the beginning of our meetings, our interests, they shared with us their interests. So, the idea that there hasn't been a proposal, to me, is not true, first of all. Secondly, we did ask Mr. Weller at the last, one of the last meetings across the street to meet to negotiate, he said he was willing to meet, but what happens is that we meet, and then the very next Sunday, I hear from about 10 of my parishioners, you know, I got a bunch of robo-calls from Port Covington this week, asking me to call my councilperson, so there's not a willingness to negotiate that we have experienced. If you're willing to convene that meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM, I think I can speak on behalf of Build at this point, the co-chair, and say that we'll be there and we'll be ready to negotiate, but we're not just going to meet to waste our time, or waste your time, or waste our members' time, or waste the public's time, if what Sagamore wants to do is just listen, say that we've listened, and then show up at the hearings the next week with the same proposals that they've had with no movement and no negotiation.
Right, and if I'm invited, I will attend tomorrow at 9:00 AM. Am I invited?
You are always invited.
All right, and I'm coming in as observer, I'm not, Bill Henry will come with me to make sure that I keep my commitment not to speak.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes, Madam Clark.
I just want to say, I have, somebody said today that a pile of paperwork arrived for each councilperson today the size of a human, and it was pretty heavy. We have written material from Sagamore up the kazoo, but more importantly, we also have reams of written material from stakeholders and advocates about what they have hammered out as requests. And, Mr. Chairman, you have been wonderful and continue to be, and this committee is wonderful, to be here and to hold these hearings, but we are running out of time to do this correctly, and if, we can't come to some agreement about, everybody's not going to win everything 100%. It has to be weighed against the, what's being given has to, by the city, has to be weighed against what's being shared by reason of the TIF. But if, if we can't come to things that are bound and agreed to, that lead to those issues we discussed, we got to, we got to either vote it up or down as a committee and a council, and we could try that, or just put it back in committee for a nap until a later time. Um, and I'm not being facetious about that, you've seen we do that sometimes when things just seem a little too complicated.
So, Councilwoman, Mr. Chairman, can we meet here tomorrow at 9:00? Are you going to convene that meeting at 9:00 AM?
We'll find a space.
Okay, great, thank you.
9:00 AM tomorrow, we'll, we'll meet here, is that all right? We'll meet in the Reeves Room.
Great, thank you.
Next door, is that all right? Say again?
It's not, it's not everybody.
It's not every, make it clear.
No, 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 it, it is the Port Three, Build Up Build, and Sagamore, is, is that Is that a part of your coalition? You just got to talk to me, you'll decide, I've named the parties as I know them to be. Port Three, Build Up Build, Sagamore, that was the, the invitation request from the parties that are at the table at this moment.
Mr. Chairman, I think SB six representatives wanted to be at that meeting as well. This is Alicia.
SB six is not a part of that negotiation. Yeah, you, you, you're not a part of that negotiation, you've, you've negotiated, and, all right, I, I would like to move on, thank you, thank you, thank you, appreciate, thanks. Alrighty, so, let's move on, BDC, that's Mr. Cole, please. So, we want to talk about profit sharing, and I know, well, I don't know much, I thought that we would have a, some, some draft language regarding this, it's something that we've been talking about, you and I, as well as the committee and others, and, and so I certainly strongly believe that as an investor, as an investor, that the taxpayers ought to receive a return on their dollars as any investor would want. In my head, I'm thinking 50%, I don't think that's a number to jump about, I think that as we talk about this, that what's going to happen is that we're going to put up the money to improve the land before the vertical, we're going to make it valuable, we're going to pay for not only the roads and, and the, you know, the links and the water, blah, 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 but we're going to pay for the trees, and we're going to pay for the parks, and we're going to pay for the amenities also to make this, as Sagamore says, more valuable land. And so, yes, I think that we are the investor, in the, a co-investor in this property by a large margin, prior to the vertical, and so if a property is worth X in 2015, we do our work, improve the land, and before anything is built on the land, that Sagamore sells a parcel, and it's worth Y, that we get half of Y. I think, not half of Y, but half of Y minus X. You got it, you got it, and I think that that's fair. Now, you argue, if I may be presumptuous, I would like you to argue for the city and let the developer argue for the developer.
So, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, while we may disagree on percentages for making a viable profit-sharing deal, you will be pleased to know that we have had not only substantive meetings and conversations with Sagamore, but they came in before we asked them to come in and said, "Let's figure out how to make this profit-sharing meaningful." Now, one thing I do want to add to this is your, in your analysis, in your lead into this conversation, you neglected to mention the increased tax revenue to the city after these improvements are made, because the city does share in a very significant way in the improvements because we get significant increased taxes on the property that wouldn't happen without the development. So that, there is profit to be shared in a very real way in increased revenues that go directly to the general fund, it's, it's in excess of $1.7 billion over the life of the bonds, in net new general fund revenue after debt service is paid. So that's significant and huge, and citywide, and benefits future councils and future mayors as they are divvying up that pie of general fund money. As for profit sharing, I think there is a genuine commitment on both sides, both BDC's side and Sagamore's side, to ensure that we have established at a minimum the best profit-sharing deal that we've ever seen to date, and I think there's a genuine commitment there. We've, we've had real conversations about how to divvy that up, where the benchmarks need to be to ensure that we're delivering the best deal humanly possible while still having a viable development project that allows for their equity investors to also get a return. Everything else you've said, I agree with, the percentages, we may not agree, but everything else, we agree. The city is an investor in the horizontal, we will benefit from the tax revenue, but we also benefit from the tremendous upside that I anticipate in this project as they start developing and selling parcels.
And yet, no financial institution, no business partner would agree to what you just said, frankly, nobody, I wouldn't.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, why would you?
No financial institution would say, "Here's the money, you know what, I'm not going to write the terms of the payback or the return of my investment." They're not going to do it, the bondholders aren't going to do it, nobody is going to say, "Terms to be determined."
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you.
So, I'm asking you, do you have for us, this committee, some terms?
Well, here, here's the challenge, we can't finalize our negotiations with them until you're done with your negotiations with them, because everything we're negotiating is on the, the post-project returns.
Okay, yeah, so here's the conundrum, or whatever, some big word I learned, I'm not pre-deposed to moving until we have an agreement and we know what profit sharing looks like.
I, I, I was going to throw out the, the fact that since what the committee is going to be looking for is a profit-sharing agreement based on net profit, and since these other negotiations may affect the amount of net profit, if we're talking percentages, in theory, we should be able to get that, at least the bare bones of that together before that part is finalized. Okay.
Thank you. Any response from Sagamore? Not necessary, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, we, my name is Stephen Siegel, Executive Vice President of Sagamore Development Company. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Almost evening. Yeah, no, I, I think I can just echo what Mr. Cole said regarding this being part of a broader picture on the financial side, we need to understand all the parts in order to be able to finalize each one.
Thank you, oh, great, all right, I think there are folk in the room, thanks, Mr. Cole, thank you, there are folk in the room who wish to speak to this.
They are awesome, they thought they were going to come up and leave.
Housing our neighbors, you wanted to speak to the affordable housing piece of it?
Yes.
Okay, not at this moment, just hold on for me, I will bring you right up, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you wanted to speak to it before. So, will we ask on this subject, those who wish to speak, to please come to the table? Thank you.
My name is the Reverend Glenna Huber, Clergy Co-Chair of Build, good afternoon, good evening, thank you for this opportunity. Build has said from the start that profit sharing should be and needs to be a critical part of this deal, we know that BDC supports that, Councilman Stokes, you support that, and Sagamore, you support that as well, the challenge we see is that, again, that percentage is stated that it cannot be determined until after the bonds have been authorized, and we, we sit here today to support the statement that you just made, that there should be named protections and a specific percentage prior to the deal being voted on. If you don't know what you're voting on, then it's hard to make an informed vote as it regards profit sharing.
Libby Cohen with Build, the one thing we would add to that is that the $1.7 billion roughly in tax revenue that would be coming in over the next several decades, those are projections, and we would certainly hope that that full amount of tax revenue comes in based off of the development, but we can't count on it like it's a fact. The profit sharing helps to mitigate the city's risk that it's taking in this development in a real way as well. And we do have an amendment, some amendment language that we'll share with the council, it basically echoes the chairman's points, so we don't need to
Thank you. This young lady, a part of the, you want to speak to this matter? Thank you so much. Okay.
This is a little bit different from what I've heard. And this, I'm Lane Burke, and when I was in college, I decided that the city needed some help with the harbor. So, I bought five houses in Federal Hill. They weren't expensive, and what I wanted to do was integrate that area. I wanted to sell, and I did, one to an African-American friend, one to an Asian friend, one to a gay friend, and it was, this was in the '40s, so that was very unacceptable. And unfortunately, it was all unacceptable because not any of them stayed. They weren't welcomed. But there's something that I would like to see here at Port Covington because I live pretty much around the corner. Key Highway is right in front of my house, that is, depending on what you consider the front or back. But I live next to the hill, Federal Hill. And I looked at the plans for Port Covington, and what surprised me was that next to the water on all sides, and there's so much water, were not public parks, were not areas where the environment could be appreciated, were not even homes that expensive as they may be would look out on the water. It was businesses, it was Sagamore businesses, so that Sagamore employees would have the pleasure of looking out at the beautiful sea and the boats coming in and so forth. I thought that was very strange planning for quality life, and I wish you would look at the plans themselves. This isn't all about money and who profits, it's about quality of life too. And in this country, what worries me, and I'm 88, so I've had a lot of time to worry enough, is that we in this country know the value of worth, but we have lost the worth of values. Please, please, look around at the actual planning of what goes on the water and consider that the environment and the beauty of a park around the water and kids being able to play there might be the thing that is better than the businesses, the tall skyscraper businesses.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Before I move to the next section, does anyone else wish to speak to this issue, the profit-sharing? Okay, Mr. Cole, I do have to ask you if you would just help me clarify something. Specifically Harbor Point, specifically the Morgan Stanley Building. Do you remember this?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't there. Ms. Clark is here and might be able to speak to it if I can, but go ahead.
Put it on Kim. But...
If you give her enough time, she can get out in the parking lot.
So, here's where I'm going with this. And correct me on my numbers if you like. So, Morgan Stanley Building, it's worth X before there's a TIF. We agreed to a TIF. Folk know we're about to improve the properties by a lot. Four months later, the Morgan Stanley Building sells for approximately $36 million above the number prior to the TIF. The citizens received nothing for improving the property to such a degree that the developer was able to take home $36 million.
I think that's correct. The $36 million number and...
All right, so it was just...
But that wasn't in the TIF district, yes.
The point I was making was the point I was making. We got it. We don't need to continue.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Thanks. You notice how he threw that at you, Kim, instead of just taking the bullet for you, right? This is about the affordability housing issue. And then, we're going to do two other matters and then we're going to close until Monday at 4:00. Great.
My name is Anthony Williams, and I'm a member of Housing Our Neighbors. I've spoke several times in the presence of Sagamore and the City Council as well. And we put a lot of work into our amendment, which is number 16-0712 that was submitted to you.
Right, we actually have a bill before the City Council that speaks to the Housing Our Neighbors legislation. It is actually a bill that is currently in City Council. Go ahead.
Right, so we don't want to be, we don't want to make things confusing with the bills, but our constituency, we stand very firm on the 20% of affordable housing in an area medium. Not to fight and argue with any other organizations over the housing or any advocates. We support their bill as well. We really support their bill. I just want to say to Sagamore that across the country, developers always make out. It just seems like it gentrifies communities, it separates communities. I mean, I've seen this. I've been around the country, homeless or not, in different places. You mentioned Bryant Park. If I went to Bryant Park tonight and there's people drinking wine in Bryant Park, but if I went in there with a can of beer and sat down and had one, what would happen to me? I would be arrested. So, that story is inaccurate about Bryant Park. I'm just saying that certain communities are developed just to displace us, not even want us around. Particularly the homeless population, it saddens me because we're on the total bottom of this playing field. And every time we try to, as an organization and as homeless individuals, speak to powers that be about some of these policies, we seem to be pushed aside. And the stories I hear about women that are homeless, living in the street, being raped, I think of nothing more than, well, if they had housing, that would be the answer. Housing. 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 Affordable housing, you know? And why don't, Sagamore, why don't you just be different? Why don't you do something different for change? I mean, really, just, you know, don't follow suit, just do something different. Really, look at the people at a human perspective, okay? The homeless population need to look into that and what's available that you could do to alleviate this problem. That's what I need to say to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes, for calling us up. I really appreciate it. My name is Mike Alksnes. I'm with Housing Our Neighbors. I know that we're here to talk about specific proposals, so I do want to focus on that. But there was some statements made about, we need to look at the numbers, we need to consider economics. And Councilman Stokes, or excuse me, Chairman Stokes yourself, said that social justice is good business, and I couldn't agree with that more. Let's take a moment and think about all the money that is currently spent on homelessness services in Baltimore City. Shelters, you know, all sorts of homelessness remediation programs, millions and millions of dollars already being spent on these. And yet, here we are talking about providing a historically large TIF to a project that does not begin to scratch the surface of the homelessness crisis or the affordable housing crisis in Baltimore City. So, if we're here to talk about numbers and economics, just think about, you know, not just the human cost that I think Anthony did a great job talking about when we're talking about homelessness. We really need to think about, where are the people of Baltimore at right now? What do the people need the most? And call me crazy, but I'm going to go ahead and say that the 2,500 people living on the streets on any given night in Baltimore City do not need a kayak. They need a place to call home, and that's what we're here to address. So, without further ado, I do want to just bring up the fact that, as was mentioned already, that we do have a bill that was introduced by Chairman Stokes, which does do a great job of outlining most of our demands. We do have some additional language to present, which I can pass your way.
Okay, okay.
But the gist of what we're getting at here is that we don't need to, the most comprehensive workaround here to address the fact that the inclusionary housing law was not able to come through for affordable housing in this project is, A, that has already been discussed, is we need to rework this TIF and reprioritize. Baltimore City needs to get its priorities straight. $140 million of green space is not something that's going to serve the people who are most vulnerable in Baltimore City. It simply isn't. So, what we want to do is we want to create a legally enforceable requirement, not a goal, not a gentleman's agreement, not a handshake, a legally enforceable requirement that 20% of the residential units created in Port Covington are affordable at extremely low income, which is about 30% AMI, roughly $26,000 per a family of four. And unless we talk about creating affordable housing at that income level, then we're not being realistic and we're not meeting people where they are in Baltimore City because where so many, where thousands of people are in Baltimore City are currently is homeless. And so, yes, I'm not going to deny the fact that there are benefits to green space, that quality of life can be increased. But if you want to talk about quality of life, let's talk about basic human needs. Let's talk about human rights. Let's talk about the fact that there are thousands of people in Baltimore who have nowhere to go. So, what our bill would do is say that at the developer's expense, as a fair trade-off for receiving a historically large TIF, some have said it's the largest TIF in the United States, others have said it's in the top three largest TIFs in the United States. This is a lot of money, and there needs to be a substantial trade-off for public benefit. And there are individuals in the crowd right now that have signs and buttons that say, "No public money without public benefit." So, we need to be careful about which public benefits we're endorsing. Our bill is a little stronger in the affordable housing category than what Port 3 has introduced. If you crunch the numbers, roughly, they're asking for about 8% of the residential units to be affordable at 30% AMI, whereas we're asking for 20. So, it's a significant difference, and we really need to ensure that we're serving the people of Baltimore who are the most vulnerable. I mean, I can't emphasize that enough, and we feel that the best way to do that in terms of housing, since that is our focus, is to create housing for people who make extremely low incomes. So, again, we thank you for welcoming us to this table. If we're invited, we would love to be part of the meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. To, you know, we have collaborated with Port 3 Build and Build Up, but because this process has been rather swift, we haven't had as much time as we would like to come to the table and negotiate collectively. And I would just ask you to consider, you know, the people who have the least out there before we dedicate so much public money into what are essentially luxuries. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move forward. Would you like to respond?
No, just have a quick time shift. Could we shift our meeting to 10:30 just to, just for convenience, just if we can shift it to 10:30?
That's between you guys.
Okay, I thought you were going to...
Well, yeah, I was trying.
Okay.
But you know how well you ignore me. So, I'm being facetious. So, you guys will talk about whether you can do that. And let me mention that tomorrow's meeting is a closed meeting. It is not being run by a government entity. You'll simply be using the facilities here at City Hall, but it is a closed meeting only between the participants of this particular meeting. And I think they're signaling 10:30 is good. Okay? So, Mark, we're off.
It's now 10:30, not 9:00.
It's 10:30 tomorrow morning. Thank you. And as I read the AMI, you realize that at 100% AMI, nobody could afford to live at Port Covington. Well, isn't your lowest rent $2,300? No? I'm not trying to start a fight. I'm just reading this, and it says that at 100% of AMI, one person could afford a rent of $1,500, two people $1,700, three people $1,900, four people $21. Am my reading is wrong?
Mr. Chairman, that number is an average.
Okay.
It's an average, which necessarily means that there are below it and above it. The commitment that's being made is the commitment that's being made, the average is the average. They're really unrelated concepts.
Right. Okay, got it. I'll learn. Thank you. Appreciate it. Was there any comments, questions from my colleagues? No? So, let me wrap a couple of things, a couple of last week's businesses. Mr. Kraus from Finance, let me ask you, if I would. Mr. Graziano, you're free to sit or leave. We're good. You just want to make sure nobody has anything bad to say about you, so you'll stick around. Okay. Mr. Kraus, so we were talking about protecting education from any fiscal impact, and there's a point of contention about the number. The number that I think MUNICAP calculated is three, what is that number? I'm not sure.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Kraus, Deputy Finance Director, yes, they calculated $315 million related to the foundation grant.
Okay, so the point of contention seems to be that they calculated that on normal, fair student funding as opposed to adding two other categories, one being compensatory, which is special ed, and the other is monies for English as a second language. So, that those two categories would double or more than double, is that true or not? The number that you've given, 315, it seems that two other baskets of funding would be impacted, or could be impacted.
And to be upfront, we did go back to MUNICAP because we want to make sure that we all have the same opportunity to review each other's work, and they did.
Sure.
And they got back to us today. I think the hearing was originally tomorrow, but we moved it back for today, so we were kind of a day off. But we did get a response from MUNICAP in today, which I'm going to share with the committee.
Okay.
And their finding is, is the reason that we were focusing on the foundation grant is because the foundation grant is the only grant program where the city's assessed value is analyzed just and is affected only by the city's economic activity or wealth.
Okay.
All of the other programs, while they consider that, it's all relative to the overall wealth factor also increasing or decreasing relative to the other counties in the state in total. So, that is the reason why we focus just on the foundation grant is because the other grant programs, the city is affected only as it's relative to the other counties and the state in general. So, in other words, if the city's wealth goes up and the other counties go up as well with the same factor, the impact is zero. So, those other grant programs are affected only in relationship to the overall wealth and activity of the other counties. So, in trying to analyze that, it's a very difficult situation for us to analyze what is going to be the city's wealth in relationship to the state and the other county surrounding. So, in that regard, they did not view that as a derogatory factor in looking at the impact. Now, what I would like to do is to have, I'll share the report, the response with the committee, and if you have further comment or insight that you want to relate to us, we'd be happy to look at it again. But they stand by their number.
Yeah, so you're reducing this to a narrative for us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Clark.
Let me, can I just come in at ground zero here and build up to what you just said, Mr. Kraus? So, okay, so MUNICAP said, so basically, their response says to you, "Oh, we didn't look at those other factors."
They did.
Oh, they did?
They did look at those factors, but what we're saying is that the foundation grant program is the only program where the city's wealth activity directly affects by itself the amount of subsidy that we get from the state. The other programs...
Can we stop there just for a second?
Okay, sure.
Because I think you're getting to my question, and it's probably something everybody else in this room understands, but I'm just trying to now, so I'm sure. So, basically, the foundation grant has to do with our wealth as determined in relationship to our growth, our own growth. to our growth, our own growth, compared not to any other percentage of growth of anybody else?
That, exactly right.
So it's based on a formula that says if you increase over a certain percentage, is that it?
Right, that's right.
Then you begin to diminish your share of the money.
That's correct.
So what did we increase over, like, well, we're talking about during, we're talking, looking forward?
The foundation grant estimated a $315 million negative impact. And this also assumes that the state takes no action on the funding commission, which we understand is, looks like they're going to take care of that situation.
Well, they're going to have a lot of meetings.
Right, well, but certainly, we can talk about this because it's an important subject. So 315 million...
Secondly, so unlike this foundation funding, which compares us to us...
Right.
And what is the percentage of growth of wealth that we have to bypass in order to start losing our share of money in the foundation grant?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, if it has to do with, we're comparing ourselves with ourselves.
Right. Okay, what goes into that calculation? Is that your question?
Yeah.
They look at a couple of things. They look at the assessed value, they take that factor times 40%, and they also take a look at personal property.
Times what?
40%. They take 40% of that as part of their formula. So they don't count 100% of the increase in assessed value.
They take 40%.
40%.
Of the increased...
Right, that's correct.
Value.
Right. And then they also take a look at personal property, which is a commercial asset.
Which is also taxed.
Which is also taxed.
At the same rate as the property.
Well, it's double. But anyway, so anyway, those are the two...
Look at that.
Excuse me?
So they, and then they put the personal and the real property together...
Into this formula, and as it increases, the amount of the foundation grant is affected by that.
And where do we tip over into losing money, like we did last, this year?
Well, that's hard for me to say. We didn't really look at...
How do you get to lose $25 million? What happened?
I can't speak to that 25. I think there was a couple of factors. There was not only a wealth factor, but there was also a recalculation of student population. I can't...
I don't think that was what, there was a recalculation, but I'm just talking about the wealth part.
See, I can't, I don't have the specifics of last year's...
So, how do, all right, so, and then the other factors that were raised at the previous hearing of measuring, I don't know what the measurements are, but somehow they're not part of this wealth formula?
They do include a wealth factor, but only as it relates to other counties and surrounding areas. So in other words, if, in other words, I think, and I'll let the MUNICAP's memo speak to this itself, but I think the analysis that was provided to the committee before would assume that only the city had an increase in wealth, where none of the other counties had any increase at all. So that was, that's not a very real, no, but that's what those numbers assumed. But what we're saying is that's not realistic, and that's not what MUNICAP was considering in their analysis. They were looking just at the foundation grant, because that's the only grant that the city's wealth factor directly impacts singularly.
And that's the only grant that we lost money through in the current year, actually?
Like I said, I can't speak to that, Councilwoman.
Okay. Well, we do need to see the analysis. I think, we don't, maybe...
What I would like to do, if I could, Councilwoman, is I will give you MUNICAP's response to the ACLU's memo, and we'll be happy to share that with the committee.
All right. There's a gentleman, ACLU.
I'm sorry, I know you all understand this very well, but I find myself floundering.
So, just real quick, my name's Gary Thurgelson, I'm with the ACLU of Maryland. To answer your specific question, ma'am, Baltimore City loses money every time, relatively, once they creep above the state average each year.
That's in comparison with other jurisdictions, and that's what we don't do in the foundation grant.
In MUNICAP's analysis, there's...
Well, I mean, that's what we were just told. I mean, we were just told that it's not in comparison to anybody else, it's in comparison to ourselves.
That's right. Yeah, they make no assumptions or prognostications about where Baltimore will fall relative to other jurisdictions going into the future. That's correct.
So it's just, so what is, what triggers our loss? Say it again.
Comparatively, it's whenever Baltimore City is above the state average of growth.
Well, but how do you get to state average?
The state knows. So like, the last two years, sorry, I'll just go into this real quick.
Other subdivisions?
The last two years, Baltimore City grew by twice the average of the state. So we were at like around 10% in growth.
So aren't we comparing ourselves with everybody else?
Yeah, in those instances, yes.
Crossing the bar of that average?
Yeah. You just won't know, and it's very hard to estimate in the future, but I just wanted...
I don't know.
Oh, sorry.
We are being compared to other subdivisions there.
We will be in the future, yes.
So why isn't this other, these other components that have a component of wealth figured into what we are losing?
I mean, I can't answer from MUNICAP. I believe that they would probably say that it's a very difficult calculation to make.
Well, they're a very big deal firm.
But, yeah, no, that's true. But actually, why I wanted to come up here is just to address what Mr. Kraus was discussing. So I was one of the folks who did the ACLU analysis that questioned MUNICAP's estimate. And so I just have to say that it's, they're not right, they're wrong when they say that those three, and it's three, Mr. Chairman, not two other programs, it's three other programs, special education, students who are Spanish speakers, and students who are low income. And so those three programs, yes, they are affected by relative wealth, but every single calculation for each one of those programs also includes a direct calculation related to wealth. So if you look, Maryland State Department of Education puts out about a 15-page length of paper every year that talks about the calculations that go into how each jurisdiction receives its state education funding. And you'll see in every single one of those, for compensatory education, ELL, and special ed, there is a line that looks at the per pupil wealth...
And if...
And multiplies it across. And so that is directly affected by wealth.
So would you or would you not add that calculation into the general foundation calculation when you're figuring what the ultimate loss will be?
It is our contention that you would, yes.
So it's not the same as the foundation measurement of wealth? It's another factor that is capable of being added to that, or not? It's not incorporated in the foundation...
Well, I mean, it's the same idea, right?
But it's not put into the calculation? I'm not trying to lead you, because I don't know where I'm going, of course.
No, no. So if you think about it this way, the city's wealth is added up totally, and then it's divided by the student population to get a per pupil wealth factor.
And so that's where...
Yeah, and that's calculated for each one of those, the foundation, as well as those three supplemental programs.
Somehow or another, this second tier didn't get calculated...
That's right.
And there's reason to believe it should have.
From, we've talked to folks at the Department of Legislative Services, you know, the legislature's policy folks, the ones who deal with the education funding formula every year, and they're, they agreed with us. They agreed with our analysis that we were right in challenging that MUNICAP's estimate was low and underestimated the total impact because it didn't include these...
So, Mr. Kraus, you're going to, somehow there's going to be a written thing, explanation, that everybody's going to have a chance to look at it. The reason it's important is, let's say that these legislators down there in Indianapolis do something about this. We want them to do something about the right thing and to build in some kind of failsafe for us if they don't cover all the right territory, or if they can't get the votes on what they would like to do to hold us harmless for the life of the bonds.
I think one of the proposals that I've heard down there is they're going to run the calculation with and without the TIF effect. And that's going to zero out any effect that Port Covington would have on our funding. So I think that would take care of it.
Basically, they'll look at the wealth that we gain from non-TIF or non-Port Covington, the non-Tot...
That's correct.
TIF, and just subtract it for 40 years.
Yes. Yeah, in effect, I think the end of the day, that's what the effect would be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, President. I always refer default back to that, Councilwoman Clark. I did, I did, I did, I did. Eight years I served under you. So we're good. Does that help at all with our clarity? All right, seems pretty muddled to me, but okay. You're going to reduce that to narrative for us, though, right? And I know I have your ACLU's narrative.
Right.
Absolutely, we'll share it. And your response, or your comments, is, okay? Thank you. I just want to do one more piece from last week, and then I think we're out of here. And thank you, everybody, for the five or six weeks of patience and helping us to work through this. And thank you, Sagamore, also. We really appreciate everyone's willingness to work through these matters. As my colleague, Mary Pat Clark, Councilwoman Clark, said, though, we are coming to a point where we have to make a decision whether we're going to do this amended bill, or we're not going to do it at all. We are coming to that point where we have to make a decision whether we can agree, even with the disagreements, or whether people are so disagreeable that we're going to punt. I don't think anybody is looking to punt. We are supportive, and we want to make it happen, and that's not a threat veiled or otherwise. I'm just saying that at some point, we've got to really get hard in trying to decide if we can move forward. Maybe this is not the right council to do that, but we're going to try. This council is committed to trying to do that in the next few weeks. Councilman Costello. There's one more piece I want to do before we walked out, but after my colleague.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just if I may, go back to the previous discussion regarding education funding. I do think it's important that we do not understate the significance of the commitment from the Senate President and the Speaker of the House. And my understanding is that there's a commitment from the Budget Chair in the House to get this issue resolved. They've demonstrated their commitment very recently to do that, and I know it's just a stopgap measure, but, you know, I think it's important that we don't understate that commitment to get this resolved permanently. And hopefully, we're all confident that they will do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Appreciate that. So from, one last piece from last week, if I might. And I want to talk a little bit more about employment. This, again, is the number-one issue on this side of the table, inside of the entire big package which we're trying to do. I know last week, we talked about job training, we talked somewhat about employment. I know, we know, you know, we all know, there is a city law ordinance that says 50% of all new hires in a city finance project must have local, must be local folk. Are you committed to that throughout the entire project, Sagamore?
Mr. Chairman, pardon me, the MOU speaks for itself. Commitment is there.
Okay, all right. Because there has been folk who have said, you know, whatever they've said. And how about the entire, all workers who may come on board? Do you have a committed number to that, a percentage?
Compliance with city law, which is a 20% goal.
I'm sorry?
The city law requires a 20% goal for that purpose.
Okay.
And that is also embodied in the MOU. Yes, sir.
Okay. And remind me of your MOU, or actually, it's not an MOU, so the MWBE. What is your commitment to minority and women businesses?
27% MBE, WBE, 10%... 27% MBE, 10% WBE on the project.
Okay, on the project entirely, that's contractors, that's paper goods, that's everything?
We are also including professional services as well. So everything from florists to lawyers to printers, everything in between.
So when you say that you have a commitment or goal of 20%, first, I ask you why it's so low on a project that is this huge, and as you claim, or say, not claim, but say it is transformative. And I push back and say transformative would mean that a lot of Baltimore City residents would be working, would be employed over the next 20, 30 years of this project, that this would be a generational for so many folk, that they would get a job that pays a living wage. It may not be a Spurrow's point or a General Motors wage, but it would be a strong wage that would allow families to be whole and to be able to sustain the families. So tell me what a goal means as opposed to mandate commitment, terms I use, and why not hire?
I'm not an economist, but we've done quite a bit, invested quite a bit in looking at the economic impact and looking at data behind that to, with respect to the 20%. We think that likely we will be able to exceed that. I think the real issue that we need to wrap our minds around as a city, and we have tried to wrap our minds around as a developer, is how can we ensure that as many, far exceeding 20%, how can we ensure that as many Baltimore City residents as possible can access the jobs, not just the construction jobs, which are the temporary jobs on the site, but also those long-term jobs? And what are, what is the training gap that we need to help fulfill collectively, but us putting our money first into that, a deep dive into workforce development training and addressing all of the issues that are barriers for employment for Baltimore City residents? Whether that be because of child support issues, whether that be because of drug treatment issues, whether that be, we're not going to be in the social services business, but there are many partners that we are committed to working with to trying to address those barriers to employment, so that individuals are able to, not only, like you said, get jobs, but, you know, I'm very concerned about them getting careers, and hopefully, some of them trying to build up businesses to get ownership. So the goal is based upon statistical data and the economics of it, but we believe that with a great deal of work, sweat equity, and a great deal of money equity, we can move that needle much farther than what we've set forth.
Okay, and so we're asking you to make a commitment that is stronger than what you... And so, we're asking you to make a commitment that is stronger than what your, what your goal is because we think that working with others, labor, private, public, that you can train folk up. We believe you can do that. It's another era, but there was an era that was transformative for men and women in this town. And they came home from war, or maybe they were already home, and they went to General Motors with the education they had, or they went to Spurrows Point with the education that they had. And they were trained up on the job. And they were able to buy homes. They were able to send their kids to college when they themselves barely got out of high school. So, again, I'm talking about the social justice aspect and how it makes business better.
Agreed.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the issue of jobs? We've had some discussion on this. This will be our final, our final item for this evening and we'll then recess until Monday at 4 o'clock. You okay? You all ready, Councilman?
Chairman Stokes, as a continuation, my name is Jim Williams. I'm here representing Build Up Baltimore. Appreciate you bringing it back to this subject because as important as all these other subjects are, there's nothing more important than a person's ability to provide for their family. Build Up Baltimore and Build and Port 3 have entered into, you know, a unified front when it comes to these amendments. We've submitted our amendment to you last week. We submitted our amendment to Sagamore as well. We asked to be able to sit down and discuss the amendment with Sagamore. No real response, other than we can talk about construction jobs. We're talking about a different vision for Baltimore. I myself represent a labor union. I'm standing next to community members. This is not a labor union issue. As played out in last week's forum, we talked a lot about labor unions. That's not what we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about workforce development and jobs. We offered up those commitments and have yet to hear anything back. We hope that tomorrow's meeting will be fruitful discussion beyond just affordable housing and that we will talk about workforce development as well.
Yeah, but can I ask you that?
Sure.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, as I understand it, then, that tomorrow, you're having a meeting with Sagamore and with specific agents of amendments? People that have been here, presented to us amendments?
Yes. One specific coalition, yes.
Okay. Well, that's why, I'm asking the question so you can clarify.
Okay.
And then, and Build Up was here, that coalition, last time we met, and has, and submitted.
Right.
And so, they're invited to?
Yes. It's Build Up. He, this gentleman, Jim Williams, is Build Up.
Yes, I, yes.
Or he represents Build Up. I have the shirt. Right? Right. That's what the shirt says.
All right. So, it's Build Up?
Build Up, Build, and Port 3.
Am I right?
Which includes the housing amendments also.
Our...
ACLU.
Okay. And, Leona?
Master, wouldn't you tell all the coalitions?
You named us. You got it.
So, it's with that group tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So...
And then, other people who've put in the amendments, like Leona did, that they'll have another...
Leona had a meeting last week with, and Rick or Jermaine could speak to that meeting.
Well, okay. So, that, so you all are having this meeting tomorrow with that group? Here?
Yes.
Okay. I got you.
You got it?
And hopefully, Mr. Chairman, could you please come out of here with some agreements that we can put into the legislation or that we can put into a binding contract so, so that we, I'm not on the committee, but we, as the committee or the council, have something to vote on?
You're not on the committee?
No, I'm not on this committee.
Mr. Chairman?
I know I'm here all the time.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a great interest in this committee.
Of course, of course, of course, of course.
And, and so, there's Roxy, she's part of...
All right. Let me, I shall come over to Mr. Malone.
Okay.
Okay?
I just, may I, may I?
Sure.
I just wanna add one thing, and that is, just backing up a bit. You know, Build would really like to see this project go through. That's a given for us. We are not trying to stop the Port Covington project. What we are reacting to is a 30- and 40-year history of deals that have gone through that have been highly under-leveraged for Baltimore and specifically for Baltimore City residents and specifically for probably our greatest need, and that is decent-paying, living-wage jobs. It's why Baltimore was the first city in the nation to pass the living-wage ordinance and Build was the organization that made that happen. It's why we've been on that for 35, 37 years. So, I wanna say that. I also wanna say, we have some really good examples, most notably Johns Hopkins system, which has voluntarily committed to a 40% local hiring commitments, a real commitment, that they have independently audited to hold themselves accountable to that commitment. And I think everybody in this room knows that, you know, Johns Hopkins hasn't always had the best relationship with Build or with the community or anybody else. So, that's been a process of, you know, people coming to the table and saying, how can we leverage some of our greatest assets toward the community's benefit? What we need to see, again, and this is what we need to see from Sagamore, is not just the strive-to-meet goals. You know, the citizens get on the hook for, we're on the hook for 41 years on, you know, the full tranche of bonds, but they have a strive-to-meet goal. Let's see real commitments. You know, our starting place is 51% local hiring, but we can negotiate that out. We wanna see real commitments from Sagamore around local hiring and not just we'll do the best we can because we have a history of 40 years that shows that we'll do the best that we can does not produce the results that citizens wanna see, and that's best for Baltimore. So, that's our, that's our call, Mr. Chairman. You've been a champion, you've been a real champion of jobs in the city and understanding the connection between jobs, our racial divisions, our economic divisions, the segregationist past that we've come from and that we're still fighting to overcome. So, you know, we really believe that if Sagamore comes to the table in good faith, we come to the table in good faith. Let's iron out some real commitments that actually take a project that has great promise and make it truly transformational for, for all of Baltimore.
Mr. Williams?
And I, and I would just add that the work that we have done without Sagamore at the table has been the work of the people of the city of Baltimore. We've talked internally between labor and community, and we're coming up with solutions. We're also presenting a vision for the city of Baltimore. There are two visions. One that includes the residents and maybe one that doesn't.
Mr. Jones and Mr. Malone?
I think, just as far as you spoke about the meeting, the meeting was, you know, another meeting that you described where both sides of the table didn't really see eye to eye and things really didn't move at all. Because what we've asked for at that meeting is the same thing that we've asked for initially, is that we build this project with Baltimore City residents making decent wages, receiving benefits, you know, so one day they can retire with dignity. In addition to that, with worker protections. We're talking about hiring, putting a mandate so contractors have to hire Baltimore City residents. You know, speaking to a lot of contractors, they don't like that idea. They wanna do things the way they usually do it. If we, if they were planning on hiring Baltimore City residents, you would not have to mandate it. And with that said, you also need to make sure we have certain protections to protect our work, to our, to protect our residents while they're on a job. Because I'll tell you one thing, if you force an employer to hire an employee, they are not gonna make it easy for that employee. So, we must also keep in mind that we need to protect these residents while they're working on, on the job to make sure they're receiving decent wages, to make, to make sure they're also receiving a good amount of hours. Because that's one thing we also learn sometimes as well. When you put a mandate on hiring a certain portion of local residents, it doesn't always mean that resident will get 40 hours as well. So, we need to make sure we have things that protect those workers at, at the same time. Because you can say, I have, you know, 50 Baltimore City residents on this job, but if they're all part-time workers, it's not gonna make that transformative change we're looking for. So, I look forward to being at the table to make sure those type of things are addressed. In addition, Sagamore, the other side of the table spoke about, they don't have all the answers when it comes to workforce development and how to get people ready while working in organized labor. There's a lot of training centers, there's a lot of apprenticeship programs. We don't have to reinvent the wheel here. We just have to utilize the resources we already have in this city to get this done.
Thank you. And, Mr. Jones, I mentioned your name, but for the record, you are in...
Yes, I'm sorry. My name's Jermaine Jones. I'm with Lyona Labor's Local 710 here in Baltimore.
Thank you. Mr. Malone?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we, we actually did sit down, per the President's request two weeks ago, Leona, we put a comprehensive offer on the table. There was no response to that offer. We sat down again at your urgent last week for a couple hours. Mr. Jones unfortunately wasn't able to be there. But, we put another offer in writing to them a week ago. We have not heard back. Build's talking about a living wage. We've exceeded the offer. We've exceeded a living wage on this job with the offer that's on the table. And when we talk about apprentice hiring, we've, we've guaranteed positions to be set aside for apprentices through that offer, but there's no response. That's worthy of a response. We haven't gotten a response. So, as I sit here, and look, I've negotiated a lot of deals in this town. I've negotiated a lot of labor contracts. We negotiated the PLA and the hotel down here, Rhonda Julius and I did. We've negotiated a lot of deals. I've negotiated deals with Mr. English and Build. Nothing gets done through this public posturing refusal to actually respond to bona fide offers. There is a bona fide offer on the table that, that puts forth more than Build is asking for, but there's no response. So, we'll be at the table. We'll, 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 we'll be at the table. We'll be at the table tomorrow. We'll negotiate at the table. But, but at some point, people have to respond to offers that are put before them. And Mr. Jones is right. He accurately represents. Their position is where their position has always been. They have yet to counter. And, and in order to move and negotiate, look, negotiations aren't Dutch auctions. We just can't keep raising our offer until someone finally says, we got it. So, we're happy to be there. We'll be there in good faith. And I can tell you, I've watched hours of negotiations now. Sagamore's negotiating in good faith. They are listening to what's said in the public hearings and they are addressing those issues. We've asked for a wage on this project. They put it forth. We've asked for apprenticeship. We put it forth. They've asked for hiring with regard to, to local residents. We, we've put it forth. And in fact, we've indicated, if you can't do it, if you can't produce it, then we'll move on past you. So, that's where we are at this point.
Great. Sounds...
To whom was the offer?
We have an offer, we have an offer on the table, Leona, in writing. We have an offer on the table to Choice in writing. Choice is working with Build. If they wanna look at that offer, they can take a look at it. They can look at the offer we had to Leona. It's in writing.
I'm not gonna allow back and forth.
And it puts, and it puts a, we put a wage, as we indicated, based on the labor scale as a minimum on the project.
I got it.
That exceeds, that exceeds the living wage. And in fact, one of the issues that we have is an apprentice wage. Leona pays 60% for the contract. We are actually looking to pay more than that, but we have to be able to have a response to that to be able to get to that number. So, the issues that have been presented to the council and that were presented last week with regard to a wage, benefits, apprentice opportunities, local hiring, we're doing that. And that's in writing before Leona. We need a response.
Hold on, sorry. What did you just say?
I'd just like to know who the offer went to.
Okay.
We need to hear this. We just need...
Okay. I will allow, I don't want this to devolve. We are set, Rick, Rick, I, I don't want this to devolve. There is a meeting scheduled, obviously, tomorrow with some of the folk, not with Lyona, but we will listen and, this evening, but...
I think, I think...
Just following a little bit of your lead, so we don't wanna turn it into the public...
I got it. I think, I, I, look, as Jimmy Carter Tosh, you don't handle your negotiations in public, you end up with salt too, right? But we've been at the table and we put, we've put proposals in writing on, that haven't been responded to. Now, our understanding is that Leona's working on a response. We've yet to receive that response.
Okay.
And Choice has been working on response for two weeks. We're waiting for that response.
Councilwoman Clark, and then Mr. Williams and...
Look, I, I know, here's the problem that we have. We, we got all this talking going on and we're about a bill, legislation, agreements, and then off everybody goes to do this project. And we seem to be spinning our wheels around that part where everybody carves something in stone and gets off to do the job. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but I'm just, I would like to hear, I don't understand, so now we're gonna hear, and I, I'm sure it's true, that offers are on tables and I just need to hear from, I just wanna, it's, where's the disconnect with these two groups?
Yeah, only a little bit. And then, and then, and then...
It's like about the US Mail or...
Yeah, and colleague, if you like, if you can make tomorrow's meeting so that we, we have that conversation. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna turn this into the public discourse negotiation.
No, I'm just asking about...
I got you.
COD.
I'm with you. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, real, real quickly, because I, I agree with my colleague over here. But to put something on the table is, is to make it seem like an offer was made. We're talking about an amendment that covers the entire workforce for this project in the city of Baltimore. We have heard no response from the other side. And I'm talking about from Build Up...
We actually had a meeting scheduled too for Monday, didn't we?
Some cross-talk, please, Mr. Malone. You know me.
I understand. That's fair. I apologize.
I'll let you talk.
Well, yeah, and we'll have that meeting tomorrow. But as far as offers made, the only one I can speak of, and I can't speak for, for Lyona, was an offer that was made regarding the infrastructure work only, covered under the TIF, not to exceed 20% of the project and not to be less than 10% of the project. That was offered to our Building Trades Choice Council, or not to exceed maybe 25%. That was an offer that was put on the table that hasn't been responded to. It was talked about last week in an effort to make it look like the unions are not responding. Look, again, this is not a union or non-union issue. What we put forth was workforce development language through Build Up Baltimore and Build. That's what we're prepared to talk about. We're not prepared to talk about project labor agreements. We're not prepared to talk about those things that have been dividing this city along way too many different lines for way too long. We're presenting a different vision.
Okay. And... Mr. Malone? Bring it up, bring it closer to you.
I've shared it with the council members.
Steve?
Who is it? Who is it?
This gentleman? Reintroduce yourself, Steve, please.
Stephen Siegel, Executive Vice President at Sagamore Development Company. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We shared all the emails and the exchange of emails between you guys, between Lyona, between Choice, between Build, with all the council people. They all know what the dialogue was. So, you can sit here and you can say, oh, we didn't respond. We gave you a proposal. They have it in black and white, so...
Thank you. We'll see you tomorrow.
I just have no idea what is being talked about.
I'm sorry, Pastor?
We have not received any written offers from Sagamore directed to Build. So, I'm just gonna state that unequivocally. And if anybody wants to produce something that came directly to Build...
That's not what was represented. That's not what was represented. What I indicated, we put a written offer on the table, Leona. We put a written offer on the table to Choice. Choice is a part of the coalition. They have it. The offers have not, maybe there's a misunderstanding and people need to take a look.
Okay.
But, but they should take a look because it's been inaccurately represented here tonight.
Back to the business, back to the business of the council. We'll have this conversation. Obviously, I better bring my lunch tomorrow, huh? Sounds like we'll be there.
I'll be there to protect you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I don't make to make light of this at all. It's a very serious, what I am very serious about is what I'm, will reiterate, is that the council, this committee, and the council is ready... the council, this committee, and the council is ready to make decisions around this bill. We are ready to move. And that means that folk have to get in a room and agree, or not agree. And then, it comes to the council, and then, we'll write language that everyone will love, or no one will love, or it's somewhere in between. But we'll begin writing language Monday, and we'll do it publicly. You'll know what we're writing, you'll know what we're voting on, and we'll do that starting Monday. I'm announcing a public work session slash voting session for this coming Monday. I don't know if we'll get through the language that will actually do the voting. It is intended that we make every attempt to at least get through some of the language as much as possible. And so, we're now going to recess the Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee until Monday, place to be determined, 4:00. We're going to the War Memorial Building, back on the second floor.
Oh, we're going to go there for tomorrow?
Yeah, for sure.
For 4:00?
4:00, Monday. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.